Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council of the City of Kingman at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. Turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Tony Henry of the Kingman Azareen Church. I would ask all of us to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the honor to be able to pray for you this evening. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to be able to come together this evening, and we thank you for your presence here among us. We thank you for this great country that we live in and the freedom that we have to come to you in prayer together openly and publicly. Father, we thank you for this wonderful city that we are each blessed to be a part of, and we thank you for all the ways our community comes together to support one another. Father, help us to look for ways to encourage our fellow citizens. Father, we thank you for each of our elected, appointed, and hired City of Kingman leaders and the heart that they have for our community. Be with each one of them as they conduct business and make decisions that will affect the citizens of Kingman. Give them wisdom and discernment, insight and clarity. Help them to listen and to respond with love for one another and for our city. And may all that happens here benefit our community and bring you glory. Father, we ask you to be with everyone in our community, especially those who serve others. Help keep them safe and healthy through these crazy times and help all of us to remember what this season is all about: the hope, peace, joy, and especially love. Father, we thank you for all that you did for us and for your many blessings in each one of our lives, and it is in the name of Jesus that we pray this evening. Amen. Thank you, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First, we have Appointments 1A, Transit Advisory Commission Appointments. The Transit Advisory Commission currently has three vacancies. Two applications from Kelly Addy and Judy Bell have been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status has been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of Kelly Addy and Judy Bell to a four-year term beginning on December 31st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2026. Okay, I am actually the council member assigned to the Transit Advisory Commission, and I noticed from notes that Kelly Addy is not able, is not here tonight. Is Judy Bell? Yes, Judy, would you like, is there anything you'd like to say to council or anything?
Hope to be against the law, none pressed.
Well, great. We appreciate your willingness to serve on this commission. So I will make the motion that we accept the applications of Kelly, Kelly Addy and Judy Bell to be, to serve on the Transit Advisory Commission.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item B, 1B Municipal Utility Commission Appointment. The Municipal Utility Commission currently has two vacancies. One application from Scott Custer has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status have been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of Scott Custer to a four-year term beginning on December 31st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2026. Is Mr. Custer here tonight? Okay. Our liaison was Counselor Nelson. Of course, she is no longer on council, so, but I don't have any issues with Mr. Custer. Anybody else? Any discussion on that? Can we have a motion then to approve Mr. Custer serving on the Municipal Utility Commission?
So moved.
In a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 1C Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission currently has one vacancy. One application from C. Kevin Sarkisian has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status have been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of C. Kevin Sarkisian to a four-year term beginning on December 31st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2026. Mr. Sarkisian's not here? Okay. But Counselor Staley, you are here.
I am here, yes. This probably my final act is the planning and zoning liaison, but I did meet with Kevin. Personally, I think he's going to be wonderful on this commission. He's fired up. He wants to help, and he also just graduated from the Citizen Academy, so I think he's going in with a lot of knowledge. So I would be happy to make the motion to approve this position on planning and zoning for Kevin Sarkisian.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 1D Heritage Preservation Commission Appointment. The Heritage Preservation Commission currently has four vacancies. One application from William Bill Resigou, hopefully I said that right, has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status has been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of William Bill Resigou to a four-year term beginning on December 31st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2026. Once again, this commission, Counselor Nelson was assigned to this commission, and of course, those commission assignments will be changing here in the next couple of weeks. So, but I don't see an issue with approving Mr. Resigou. Can we have a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor Watkins, are you allowing discussion on this matter or no?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there any discussion? I apologize.
Yes, Mayor Watkins, my plan is voting no on this, not against Mr. Bill Resigou. Don't personally know him, but my belief is that heritage should be preserved by the people, not the government. If people find value in it, they'll preserve it themselves, but that's all I have to add.
Okay, I appreciate that comment. Moving forward, can we have someone make a motion on approving Mr. Resigou on that commission?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number two, Call of the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Meredith, do we have any?
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Nobody registered to call in and join us via Zoom. No written comments were received, and we do have one person in the audience that wishes to address council this evening.
Okay. Ms. Pam Tappan, would you like to come forward and state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Pam Tappan, and I've been a resident for Kingman for almost four years. First, I want to congratulate the new and returning council members. Although I have only dealt with one of you, Mr. Cameron Pat, best county prosecutor ever, I know each of you will do your very best for the City of Kingman. I love Kingman. Having said that, I do have a few issues. By addressing issues, I also like to offer solutions. Being this is the first council meeting I have attended, these suggestions may have already been discussed and totally discarded. In addition, I do know you will not be commenting on these issues, but would like to discuss them in pride and in the future. Weeds. Everybody knows this is an issue. My question, solution, can we create an ordinance where the deadline for re-debatement is a certain date on the calendar? If it is not met, the City Council could contract to have weeds removed. The cost of removal could then be added to the property tax. Second, Cars, Trucks, Campers on Lawns. There must be an ordinance to this. I read that we're doing more with code enforcement. I'd like to see if this can be placed on high priority. Three, Political Signs. After every election, this is a blight on our community. For future elections, can we make it mandatory that every sign has a phone number on the back so they can be called for sign pickup? After the selected time by council, these, if these signs are not picked up, the candidate would be charged $20 per sign that had to be removed by the city. Construction Debris. You see illegal dumping in many places. Construction debris contributes to this. For construction debris, may contractors take pictures of the building site and surrounding areas before permits are issued. If any debris is left after construction, the permit would not be finalized for occupancy until the debris is gone. Businesses. A lot of businesses take part of their buildings, but many do not. Can we make beautification part of the business license? Keep your business looking good or assess penalties for not doing so and add that to next year's license renewal? Fairgrounds. I presented you with an attachment, and I did that at the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. It was like talking to a brick wall. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Tappan. Staff has, of course, heard your concerns, and hopefully one of them will get with you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item number three, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And of course, we have Items A through F. Any discussion on any of these items? Does anything need to be pulled?
Mayor Watkins, I would like to pull Item E and F.
E and F, okay. We'll pull those items for discussion. Okay, anything else? Okay, can we have a motion then for the consent agenda Items A through D?
So move.
With, with the exceptions of E and F.
Second.
Okay, motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item E, Resolution Number 5445, Authorization to Enter Into a Lease Purchase Agreement with Zion's Bank Corporation NA for '4, 2023 Chevrolet Tahos. The City of Kingman is currently utilizing two lease programs to replace its fleet, Enterprise Fleet Management and Leasing Service Center Incorporated. However, with the rise in interest rates, city staff felt it was necessary to perform due diligence and research other leasing programs and interest rates. City staff is requesting that a lease purchase agreement be entered into with Zion Bank Corporation NA to serve as another leasing program alternative for citywide fleet replacements and that this program be utilized to purchase '4, 2023 Chevrolet Tahos for the police department. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. This kind of goes with Item F, but I'm just wondering the purpose for leasing for Chevy Tahos because it seems like most of the Kingman Police Department cruisers, which I want them to have, are being purchased outright, and it seems that we are going to be upfitting these cruisers anyway, essentially while he's for, why buy other ones? And I'm also wondering about the life expectancies of these police cruisers. Do we phase them out after X amount of years or X amount of miles?
Okay, Mr. Foggin.
Thank you. So the last question first, there are useful life for these vehicles. It goes by year, but we also look at mileage, so it's kind of a combination thereof. If there's extra mileage that goes on any of our vehicles, it gets replaced sooner just because repair of that vehicle starts eating into the value of it. But generally, we set the, the length of time for a police vehicle at about five years. If we find at the, at that five-year period, we evaluate, is that vehicle still in good operating condition? What's the ability to replace it? Generally, it will get replaced at year five. Mileage on it generally is still acceptable. We're always looking for all of our vehicles to be replaced with some trade-in value still there so that they, there is a return on our investment. The leasing program for our fleet is basically, it is a cash flow issue where we are basically trying to spread the cost of the, the fleet out across time and so that there is cash available for other functions. And so we have in the past bought police vehicles outright, and they were not actually part of the lease program. Now, the leasing programs are allowing police vehicles to be part of the leasing program with, with the upfitting, which was not something done in the past. So that's why we're doing police vehicles along with our other vehicles as a leasing program.
Mayor Watkins, may I ask additional question?
Yes, of course.
Manager Foggin, when we're looking at the extended use or the previous life, the use of life, excuse me, for these vehicles, as soon as they hit five years or their mileage, would we reappropriate these cruisers to different departments so then they could use them after KPD uses them? Or would they go directly to auction or perhaps both?
They actually go to auction for the most part. They're usually a little bit tired. The point of replacing these vehicles in a timely manner is so that they don't stay in your fleet and eat up maintenance money.
Thank you, Mr. Pat. Thank you, Mayor Watkins. I have no further questions.
Okay. As you mentioned, Item F, I'm sure is a similar, similar questions, correct?
It was, it was just why are we purchasing some under the vehicle replacements and leasing some? And I appreciate Manager Foggin's clarification.
Okay. And I know, Mr. Foggin, I know his staff has presented the numbers before and looked at it, and it seemed like this was the more efficient way, less costly.
Yep.
All the way through.
And it allows, you know, again, I'll remind the council that this isn't your typical leasing program that you and I as individuals would enter into. We have the ability to, after owning these vehicles for 13 months, if they're for some reason that we wanted to sell them, there is that ability as well. And we have had some, quite some good success in turning over our fleet vehicles. Unfortunately, as of late, we haven't been as successful because there's been no vehicles to purchase, but we look, we're looking for the future of this to be, continue to be a success for the overall success for the community and for the organization, so.
Well, thanks for the clarification, and I know as Mr. Pat is concerned about budget too, and basically watching the bottom line, I think, I know the numbers, I've, we've seen them before, I can't remember now, but I know it does actually made more sense to lease it and turn it back in. Okay. Carl, since F is very similar and we basically have discussion on it, can we do both the same time or do we need to do them separately?
I don't think there's a problem if you just approve both of those items at the same time, just with the motion.
Okay. Mr. Pat, is all right with you?
Yes, Mayor Watkins, thank you.
Okay, would you like to make a motion so on that then, on Items E and F?
Yes, I will move to approve Items E and F on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, Old Business. We don't have anything tonight. Item number five, New Business. Likewise, this is going to be a short and quick meeting. Of course, it is right before the holidays.
Don't jinx us.
Yes. We do have some department reports.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. So, item number six, Department Reports. A Panhandling Program Update. Turn some time over to Mr. Foggin and our city clerk.
And the city attorney, actually.
Okay.
So this is actually kind of a two-part presentation for you. So over the last leased year, we've been hearing about vagrancy and panhandling. And as part of that, there have, I've been in meetings, I'm sure that all of you have been in meetings, or you've talked to people that have suggested that we end or do away with panhandling through some kind of ordinance or process. And I've asked Carl if he would speak to that part of what the question has been is, you know, what is our ability as a city? What are we doing as a city versus other cities in Arizona with regards to panhandling? You know, are we different? You know, what's the similarities? And then after Carl's presentation, Annie and I have been working on a panhandling program that, you know, some investigative into what other communities are doing, you know, has it worked? What does it look like and what can Kingman do as part of a program? So with that, I will turn the legal stuff over to Mr. Cooper.
Good evening. Probably won't go too deep into the legal issue, but this is a, even though it's part of my presentation, this is basically a nationwide issue that is handled, for the most part, very similarly across the country. There may be a little bit of differences based on federal circuit or some, the state supreme, or the state Supreme Court decisions, but they're all going to be handled very much the same. And basically, the, the activity of panhandling is a protected activity. It's a First Amendment free speech activity, and the courts really look at it as something that's very similar to, you know, anybody standing on the sidewalk that could be potentially asking for someone to sign a petition or asking someone to vote for somebody or, you know, a youth activity trying to get money for a car wash or something. So it's, it's those activities of people who are out in the public have that right to, to make those requests. The courts have said it, it doesn't really matter if that request makes you uncomfortable. It's a natural part of living in what they call a free society. So, so the First Amendment really takes control on this issue. There's some significant, I guess, state Supreme Court cases that have basically reinforced this. So the, the question is how do we, we deal with it? And there's a state statute that's called an aggressive solicitation statute that I know a lot of people talk about. That's, when I say it's recent, I can't remember when it was passed, but probably the last five years or so. Prior to that, a lot of cities had their own aggressive solicitation ordinance. We had one that we recently got rid of as we're cleaning up our code, and the reason we got rid of it is because there's a state statute that basically covers the same issues. I have some concerns with the state statute, and we don't really see it being enforced too often as the aggressive solicitation portion because it's, it's really, can break it down into three other criminal charges that if we feel we need to look at, which would be trespassing, disorderly conduct, or assault. So basically, if someone is asking somebody for money, and if they're doing it on private property, and that private property has already said you can't do that, they can be charged with trespassing. And we've worked closely with KPD to, to make sure we have a good program with a bunch of businesses that are aware of this process. There's some paperwork that they've already signed off on to, to give us some of the authorities to do this. The disorderly and the assault are based along the same lines. If, if someone's becoming very aggressive in your face, pushing, or actually physically assaulting, obviously, we can, we can take action with that as well, but it won't be under the aggressive solicitation statute. It'll be under disorderly conduct and assault. I've talked to other city attorneys about this. We're all struggling on dealing with this issue. I'm sure Councilman Pat, when he was doing misdemeanors years ago, probably was aware of it. You know, we have a constitution for a reason. It gives us a lot of benefits, but there's some side effects that maybe we don't like, but we try to work with it. And I think sometimes the options is to look away from the criminalization, criminalization, excuse me, the criminalization of the activity and maybe look at redirecting some of those activities, which is, I think, the part that Annie's going to get into.
Any questions for Carl on the, kind of the criminal side of the ledger?
Yes, Counselor Staley.
Phoenix area city, I'm sure you know about, recently passed a panhandling law. So are you familiar with?
There is word for word, no, but I'm, I know what, most of the cities all have a very similar or have had a very similar panhandling ordinance. And I think they're in litigation right now.
You, you think that the city is already?
I believe Phoenix is in litigation right now.
Oh, right, okay. I, you know, that's what we're hearing from our constituents is like, look, the city's already passed something, why can't you? And so, you know, we need to be able to go back and explain where they're at, what they've done, and why we're taking a different course of action.
Yeah, like I say, the, the idea is you're trying to criminalize a specific behavior or an expression, and, and I don't want to say you cannot do that, but the ability to do that by the government regulating that expression is narrowly construed and is reviewed with strict scrutiny from the courts. We like to try and avoid providing free money to these folks when we get sued, so that's why we try to avoid, because you can push the envelope, but then you're accepting some of those risks, which is why we try to work within already really well-established statutes. But the idea of just someone on the street corner asking for money, you can't stop that. And, and that's the problem. But like I say, when, if they start throwing things, they start trespassing somewhere else, then we can deal with it, and I think law enforcement has been pretty successful with it. But it's, it's just, it's those behaviors that sometimes people just don't like, and I get that. And like I say, you're going to have those group of cheerleaders on the side of the road trying to get you in for a car wash, and it's the same behavior. And how do you differentiate those two?
That makes sense. So when we talk about aggressive solicitation, like recently I was in the turning lane on airway trying to get onto Stockton Hill. There were seeing young people in traffic knocking, they knocked on my window, trying to get me to roll down the window to give them money. Do you believe that that would fall within an aggressive?
No.
Category? It isn't.
No. But there would be some issues with them impeding traffic. So when you see that sort of behavior, it's always good to call law enforcement because I hear a lot of anecdotal things, but until we have somebody on the scene that's actually dealing with it, it, it's not something we can deal with, so.
Sure.
But something like that, no.
Yeah, I was more worried about them getting hit. That's like a very dangerous intersection.
Well, and so, the police department was out, corrected that, the behavior as much as they possibly could, and there was reports of knocking on the window. Some people felt that was aggressive.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that scares a lot of people, and there are already older people trying to focus on the driving and the traffic, and now someone's on the window.
And I will say that that activity was really watched closely by KPD to the point of having to correct some activities while, while it was happening, including out in, out in traffic.
And, and having said no, that doesn't mean we can't try, as we say, change that behavior, but the courts have been really explicit is, you may feel uncomfortable and you're, I don't want to say you have to deal with it, but that's a part of life is you, you may feel uncomfortable with those other people's behavior.
Thanks, Counselor Staley. I know in reference to that group that was doing that, they even were, on the fact, Carl, and I'm sure you had, saw reports of it, they had like a fishnet, small fishnet on a stick, and they were putting in people's windows, handing, you know, asking for money.
Yeah, and I, I think, as they say, some of those behaviors are going to then cross the line.
Right. And I think, I think you mentioned though, the most important thing is call law enforcement and notify them and let them deal with it.
Because even if it's not a chargeable arrestable offense, it may be something we can just say, hey, don't do that because we're going to keep an eye on you.
can just say, "Hey, don't do that, because we're going to keep an eye on you."
Then what about private property versus public property? And, for example, that group, for example, was blocking the sidewalk there on the corner by Smiths.
And, and we can't block the traffic on the sidewalk, so there's issues with that. I know law enforcement has talked to folks, and sometimes they set up a camp, you know, where they're blocking the sidewalk. I've, I've, my understanding is a lot of them have then moved their, their belongings or whatever off of the sidewalk into either the right-of-way or into some private property. If they occupy private property, and that business owner or that private property owner can say, "We don't want them there," but then you're getting, then what happens, they get pushed into that little bit of right-of-way area that exists.
Right.
And again, especially with sidewalks, they're what's called a traditional public forum, where people have that right to gather to express things, so. So, it's, yeah, it's difficult, and these are the exact same conversations that every council is having across the country.
Yes.
It, and it's, it's all struggling to find that kind of solution, which is, again, I think, kind of that redirecting and looking at these other approaches. So, you've seen some other cities doing some non-criminal legal base issues and trying to provide other options, so.
Okay. Well, thanks for that, for that clarification, Carl. Yes, oh, yes, yes, Counselor Ward.
Carl, so you're saying if a guy sticks his arm inside the window of my car, that's not aggressive?
Well, I'm not saying that, because I say when some of that activity becomes aggressive. But again, if someone's reaching in to hand you something, or ask for, "Can I have some money?", I'm going to tell you, that'll be a difficult call, but I'm not saying it couldn't happen.
What happens when I react? Because I will.
Yeah.
I was, I was there.
Yeah.
I saw some of it. They didn't, the guy came up to my car, and I just waved him off, and he walked away. But if he hadn't, there would have been an issue.
So...
Because I won't tolerate...
Right.
Somebody entering my space.
Right.
And I don't expect anybody else to. And I think we should do something about it, whatever we can.
So, I, I'm going to give you the answer that everybody hates that lawyers do, is it depends. The fact pattern depends. So, if it's a fist shaking right up in your face, that's probably going to be aggressive. If it's the window's partially down, or the window's down and you have a hand here that can have some money, that might be, that might be a tough call to call that an aggressive.
If he's outside of my car. But if he sticks his hand in my car...
Right.
To me, that's aggressive, and, and I will react. And I expect other people to.
But by react, you mean call?
Call the police.
The police, right?
No.
Well, we would like that discussion.
We would prefer that you call the police.
I know you would, but it's, it's something that's a natural reaction, and it's instantaneous. And you will see it happen if this continues, not just for me, but there are other people out there that won't tolerate it.
I think we, we all understand it's a problem, and everybody's trying to find a solution. And we don't always have the best tools based on some of the things that happen, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Ward, I appreciate your comments. I know that is frustrating, though. Of course, fastest way is just roll the window up, and hopefully they get their head out of the way. Anyway, Carl, once again, thanks, and appreciate the discussion. Manager Foggan?
Thank you. And just to put an end on the period to Carl's comments, in talking with Chief Cooper and his team about it, the answer is always, if you're asked about this, or you experience it yourself, whether you're on private property, or you're on the street, or whatever, if, if you feel like there's aggressive panhandling, please call the police department. Dial 911 and report it, because it is not enough for us to get a call a day later about someone being upset that they were, they felt accosted or scared in a parking lot. If you feel scared, or you feel like someone is being inappropriate, dial 911. That is the way to deal with this. And there is no law that we could pass that is going to allow this to stop if we don't know about it. And we do have police officers that are aware of these situations and are happy and willing to work with our citizens to stop aggressive panhandling. We do not want it in our community, and there are times where people are approached in a parking lot by people that are unstable, and we need to recognize that, be aware of our surroundings, but when we have that, we need to dial 911, so.
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
So, along those lines, could we elaborate and, and maybe let everybody know what happens? Because last week, I was followed twice in a park, two different parking lots, and it made me feel very uncomfortable. So, had I called 911, one of them was, I mean, it was very uncomfortable, and, and I was alone. So, calling 911, then what is the procedure? What, what happens once 911 is called to protect that next person?
Chief, we're going to pick on you.
I was waiting. So, the term aggressive has to be defined. So, this is going to be another legal answer. Just because you're uncomfortable doesn't mean it would meet the statute requirements for being aggressive. But that was what the officers are trained to do, is to respond and determine what happened and figure out the elements. If, if it's aggressive, then that's a statute they can be charged with. If they're trespassing, that's a separate crime. If they're stepping in the roadway, that's a Title 28 violation. If they're blocking the sidewalk, that's a Title 28 violation. That's different than panhandling, right? So, that's, that's what makes this, let's say, complicated, but it's, it's not as simple as you would think. A lot of what people are doing, they're just frustrated, they don't like what it appears. I understand that, but that, the challenge is, is for my officers to establish what crime has occurred, right? And a lot of these people don't want to be a reporting person, which makes it difficult for us, because we all feel conflicted, right? We want to be human and humane, that's what I see. But the reality is, the direction of my staff, we need to be kind, compassionate, but we need to make it inconvenient, because this shouldn't be happening on the sidewalks, they shouldn't be stepping in the streets. So, when you call 911, we are going to respond, and then we will establish if, what crime has occurred, if anything.
So, let's say that I was followed to my car, and somebody was yelling at me, and I got faster, they got faster, and I got into my vehicle, and they came up to my vehicle. And I was able to, let's say, call, let's say I called 911. If your officer arrived on that scene and talked to that individual and determined that they were aggressive, then would they be removed? Would they be...
They would be arrested.
Okay.
Just based on what you're saying. They would be arrested, handcuffed, and taken away, and most likely sighted, released, possibly booked into jail, so.
Okay.
I love the what-if questions.
Well, because that, that's my point. It's like, had I, had I called, you know, then you protect the next person. So, I want, I needed to know what that looked like. So, if it was aggressive behavior, and I knew that individual was going to be arrested for that, I, I will now think twice in calling 911, because I wouldn't want that to happen to another, you know, family, single female, you know, whatever, in the parking lot. So, that, that helps to know.
The goal is to get past this probable cause standard, right? And that's what we try to do prior to making an arrest, and then it goes through the legal process, and the attorneys in the system does what it does. But when you're talking arguing, yelling at you, that's pretty clear to me. I would expect my staff to make an arrest if that's been clearly established, and...
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Saly. And thanks, Chief Cooper.
All right.
Mr. Foggan, moving on.
Yes, so, so on to a, a program. So, we know that there are a number of panhandling programs around the state and around the country. And I know I've talked to several council members that have pointed out programs. And so, we, we, Annie and I, got to work on looking at programs and seeing what programs were out there, what was a good fit for Kingman? Was there a good fit for Kingman? And so, I asked Annie to do the research, and I've asked her to show you, walk you through what she found, and so, Ms. Annie.
Clerk Meredith.
Just give me one second here. Get to do all my own IT from my seat. All right, so, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to present this research information to you. It's not super extensive, it is the, the high level, but I am happy to answer questions, as is Mr. Foggan, should you have any as we're going through it. The purpose of this research was really to identify what other communities have existing programs, the current services, so really contact, reach out, have conversations with people about the current services that are available to the homeless population in our community. As Manager Foggan said, we brainstormed what approach would be most beneficial to Kingman, and then here we are to provide the information back to you. So, the other programs that I looked at in Arizona and nationwide was City of Prescott's Change for the Better, City of Chandler's Change Up Chandler, Town of Gilbert, Neighbor to Neighbor, Dallas, Texas, In Panhandling Now, Douglas County, Handouts Don't Help, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Keep the Change, Iowa City, Iowa, Repurposed Parking Meter Program. They didn't have a name for their program, but that's what they utilized, so that's what I put there. And then Montgomery, Alabama, had Give Smart Montgomery. The main themes of all of these programs was to do, just as council would like to do, reduce the amount of panhandling, especially in your downtown and business districts, encourage responsible giving through a donation program, support those organizations that, that we will show you later, that we've identified that are already serving the homeless population in our community. And then we want to make sure there's an educational component, that we do that through a lot of programs in the city. We want to make sure we are educating the community, utilizing signage and then videos to encourage them to think about their giving options, and then utilizing landscaping to discourage panhandling in shopping areas and intersections. These are some of the samples, and you guys have this, I did print you off a handout, you can see, for different cities, even cities that don't have programs, I found in my research, like throughout the valley especially, have signs throughout their communities that say it's okay to say no to panhandling. Most people don't give money to panhandlers, you know, give to other agencies instead, help it, you know, help this way. So, like I said, even the communities that didn't necessarily have a program that they were administering, they still were discouraging it through signage and education. So, these are the organizations that I identified and had conversations with about the specific services that they provide to the homeless population in our community. Cornerstone Mission is a men's shelter, but not even just in their shelter capacity. Do they serve the community, but they also have day programs. People can go in, get showers, get food, get clothing, get blankets, those sorts of things. And then their women and children shelter is Diana's Faith House. It offers those same things. Harbor House, which is our local youth shelter, that is for any kids that are 12 years old up until their 18th birthday. They do provide shelter services. They as well provide those daily needs that, that someone might be able to walk in and receive. The Salvation Army and St. Vincent de Paul both provide meals, clothing, and like blankets and, and those types of things to our homeless population, too. So, these are the organizations that we have identified for Kingman to support, because they in turn support the population that needs it. This is what we have brainstormed, calling it Kingman Coins for Kindness. That could be in the works. Some of the things that we identified in this, this picture actually here, you can't see it well, I wish you could see it better, is of the shopping cart that often doubles as a chair in this intersection for people that are panhandling. But what we have to propose for you is collecting money through donation boxes that we have located throughout the city. Those funds that are collected will be deposited into the city and then distributed back to those organizations that we listed on a rotating basis. It will be similar to our utility billing department. You can send in additional monies with your utility bill to go to help support agencies that provide utility assistance, so same type of thing. The signage would be placed in the areas known as high panhandling traffic areas, so this is one of them for sure. And then utilize landscaping as a way to discourage people setting up their camps in these areas. For the, the areas that are not city-owned property, we would work, and I believe are already working with, those business owners to update their landscaping, to make it less desirable to be in those locations. And then any areas that are owned by the city, then we would make sure that our landscaping was in place as well. And then this is just a little mock-up sign that I did, that we could potentially see signs around our community, again, that discourage the panhandling and giving money, and instead do some responsible giving to the organizations that support that population. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions from counselors or our staff about this program, these proposals? And of course, obviously, if we have ideas or input, we could forward that to you, Mr. Foggan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes. Well, Mr. Savage, I think you had a question first?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I think Counselor Saly.
In a lot of communities, it's just not the homeless that are panhandling. There's people that literally make livings off of money for this, but most of them are hungry. So, I would look at possibly including the food bank with that, helping them out, because they needed a lot of help just to get through this holidays right now, so, just, just an idea.
Okay, good idea. Counselor Saly.
I just wondered in your research if you were able to see if those signs, maybe, if you put up a sign that says, "Don't give to panhandlers," does that stop the panhandlers from standing there? Or does it do nothing? They still stand by the sign?
That, well, they can, I mean, it's not...
I mean, they can, but I wonder if it just, you know, sends a message, and then you think, "Well, I'm not going to stand by the sign."
Well, obviously, our hope is that it reduces panhandling. We, we know that it's not going to stop panhandling, and I'm sure there'll be pictures that are memes that are, guy holding a sign, panhandling with the sign over his head, right? I mean, I, I, I can envision it now, seeing it on, you know, Facebook or whatever. But our hope is that, that when it's not profitable, as Counselor Savage pointed out, that a lot of times, panhandling is being done by professionals and not people that need the help. That my hope is that our program is successful, and they don't find it profitable to do what they're doing, and that those, those coins go, that money goes to organizations that are going to, that are going to use it. I, I've sat through a number of presentations by the homeless shelter directors in one place, Salem, Oregon, that has massive homeless populations, and I've watched that gentleman plead to people to not give money just out the window, and to put it towards a better purpose, a higher purpose. And it, it, these organizations that, that we have in our community are working really hard for those that are really truly disadvantaged.
Yeah. Well, I think, in my opinion, you know, this is worth a shot. I am really sympathetic to people who are truly struggling and, and need a meal. So, if there's a way to avoid criminalizing and just causing those people more harm through tickets or jail time, and there's a way to support our, our local charities, then, you know, it's, it's worth a shot. If you spend any time driving around town, you notice a lot of corners are the same people every single day. And so, maybe, maybe they need more help, or maybe it's like Mr. Savage said, this is their full-time job. So, I'm in support of giving this a try, for sure.
So, just, just to let everybody know, we're going to work through this, through this program, design signs, and plan on rolling it out here in a month or so. So, we are actively going to move forward with, with it, think that it's going to be good for our community, and, you know, we've heard enough from the council... And, you know, we've heard enough from the council and the community to know that we got to, we got to have a program, so.
Mayor Walker.
Counselor Pat, yes. Yes. Manager Foggan is correct on this. This isn't going to eliminate panhandling, but these signs deter and educate the public at the same time because it shows people, there's a resource. Clearly, Annie Meredith has created a link. This link will provide information. And what this does, if people are instead donating privately to charity or putting the money in the donation bins and then we distribute it to the private charities, we're ensuring that this money doesn't go towards drugs, doesn't go towards illegal activity, doesn't go towards somebody supporting a substance abuse problem that they might have with alcohol. It's not going to stop it completely, but I could tell you, it deters a lot of travelers from donating or contributing to the continual problem of panhandling. They see the sign and they think, well, this is a quick fix. I'm helping somebody get food. But if they're educated and they learn, hey, this money could be spent wisely and effectively through charities that really care, that this money won't get into, you know, illegal substances or illicit substances, they could be confident that their money's going to a good place that will support these people, get them fed or help them get off of the streets.
Thank you. Counselor Samley.
I too am in support, and I'm grateful that all the research that you did, and I say the more signs around town, the better.
I agree. Counselor Walker, I want to put you on the spot. Actually, back in October, you sent Counselor Samley and I a picture of the Chandler sign.
Yes.
And where it says, "Say no to panhandling. Consider local."
I'm the first and the next, so I think they're working.
So it's working. And that's what I was going to bring up. Annie, did you, when you, when you were able to do some research on this and contact Chandler, for example, what has it, have they seen any kind of decrease because of the signage that they put up?
I don't know that it has necessarily decreased panhandlers' presence. I believe what they are seeing is a significant contribution coming into the city to support the organizations. So especially with the seasonal, you know, ours come from Flagstaff down to Kingman, depending on the weather. I don't know that we'll be able to get rid of that, but they are seeing people are the collection of the funds to go to the organizations that are really contribute to helping the, those that really need it in the community. They are seeing those funds come in. And I just wanted to clarify really quick to Councilmember Pat's comment. The mock sign I did had a link on it that is not yet an active link, so I don't want anybody to go there. But that was just an example of a call to action where somebody could go, but it's part of what's in the works for this program.
Great. Yes, Counselor, yes. Counselor Staley has another question.
Just on a side note, since we're discussing this, Ron, the plans that we have for the off-ramps to re-landscape those, have we taken this into consideration in putting, creating an environment that is not friendly for standing and camping and hanging out?
Well, the, the off-ramps are controlled by ADOT, and they're people-
Well, the corners.
Yeah, yeah, the corners are as well, actually. And any activity like this is prohibited on the interstate. So if you see that, definitely let us know. Because that, ADOT, there is some rules about being able to, to camp and hang out in that, in that open space there. It's not, it's currently not allowed.
I see people there all the time.
I see people standing on the sidewalk, but I have not seen anybody camping.
Okay.
So if you, if we see that, we, yeah, we want to know about it.
Okay.
And I appreciate you bringing that up about interstate highways and the off-ramps with them. And that is true. And that's not legal to be there. So, okay. Any other comments or questions, discussion about this? Staff, once again, thanks for all the work on this, and we're excited to see some more. Okay, moving forward. Item number seven, announcements by Mayor.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Six B.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to move this meeting along, all right?
Well, you're the one that changed it.
Item six B, State Water Infrastructure Funding Report, Mr. Foggan.
Yes, thank you. At our last meeting, our very good lobbyist had mentioned money that had been earmarked by the state, and Counselor Staley had asked for an update on what that money was and what it could be used for. And it was actually a really easy answer that we could have actually, you know, we could have given, but we couldn't give it at the time. So I've asked Tina just to, to walk you through what that money is, and unfortunately, it's not a big grant program, is, I guess, I'm stealing some of Tina's thunder, but go ahead, Ms. Tina.
Sure. So to provide a little bit more detail to what Mr. Dorn had shared with you at the last council meeting. How about, how about over here?
There you go.
All right. So to provide a little bit more detail on the programs that Mr. Dorn had shared with you at the last council meeting, he had shared that $1.2 billion was being allocated towards these types of programs. And WIFA, or the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority, has been tasked with the oversight and the managing of these programs. There are two of them. One of them is called the Long-Term Water Augmentation Fund, and that particular fund has been allocated $1 billion over the course of three fiscal years. Now, 75% of those monies are dedicated towards water supply development projects for importing water from outside of the state's boundaries into the state. And so that's something that the state, through, and with a public-private partnership, are going to utilize those monies. The other 25% of monies, cities do qualify for loans, potentially for water supply development projects, but the state is not focused on developing any policies and guidelines towards those monies yet. They are laser-focused on getting money, water into our state. The other fund is called, actually, the Water Conservation Grant Fund. Now, there is $200 million that is being allocated towards that fund. Those are ARPA monies that the state is, they're, they're using a portion of their ARPA monies for this particular fund. Now, for ARPA funding, we know that there are some restrictions and timelines on that, and so there is a timeline tied to the use of those grant monies that expires December 31st of 2024. So the monies either have to be spent or encumbered by that period of time. Now, it is a grant program, and it is for voluntary water conservation programs or projects. So cities, eligible entities like cities, can apply for monies for a conservation program, up to $3 million. There is a 25% match on that. Those are for programs. If you have a project, you can apply for $250,000 with a 25% match. Now, the program was approved with this last legislative cycle. However, they are still, meaning WIFA, is still looking for persons to apply to be on the committee that will basically determine the eligibility, the criteria that'll be used, and policies and guidelines. So this program has not launched yet. They still have to get a committee on board. They have to adopt policies and guidelines, and at that point, WIFA will send out a notice of funding opportunity to those, to those people who have enrolled in receiving those. They're hoping in the next few months that that program will, will launch, and certainly we will be interested in participating in it. That's where the $1.2 million is being allocated to. I hope that provides some more information, and certainly was helpful for us as well to do the research on that.
Thank you, Tina, and sorry about that. Didn't mean to not have your report, so we're glad you're here tonight.
Great.
Okay, any other comments for Ms. Moline?
I just want to say thank you. That's unfortunate that it got shrunk down so small. I was really hoping maybe that that sewer line downtown and, you know, that maybe, because bringing that water back up might, might qualify and cut that in half, and then we can make that project happen because it costs too much. And that's what I was hoping you would say, so.
I can say it, but it wouldn't be true.
Thanks, Annie. Thank you anyway, Tina. I appreciate it. I, you know, and it's gonna, you know, I know you guys are ready. I just, he made it sound like you better be ready to go to bat for your money, and I thought, what money are we going to go to bat for?
No, appreciate, we appreciate the question, the opportunity to present it, because there are times where you hear this in the news, or somebody mentions it, and it sounds, it sounds great, and when you start boiling out the details, you know, when you find out you can apply for, you know, $250,000 for millions of dollars worth of project, it's like, well, thanks. So, thank you, Ms. Tina.
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait, any other comments or questions from council?
Hi, Tina. Was there any talk about, ooh, boomer.
About where they're going to put the water from?
There was not.
Now, item number seven, announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
Yeah, a few things. So tri-city council meeting is actually going to be, I know that we had said that it was going to be in January. It actually has been moved to February 8th at 10:00. It will be here in Kingman this, this quarter, and actually will be in this room. The angel tree tags, I reported last time that they've all been taken. I just wanted to close the loop on that and tell you that on our angel tree out in the lobby, we went through 105 tags. And very, very thankful to both our internal team and our citizens for wanting to participate in that and to taking all of them. So really successful there. The item that we're very happy about is the irrigation non-expansion area was approved by ADWR Director yesterday. The announcement was made at 5:10 last night that we are in an INA, and that irrigation expansion is now prohibited, and we're really grateful for that opportunity as we've been looking for water legislation to protect water in our aquifer for at least six years, if not longer. And just a big thank you to the council for supporting it. A big thank you to those that testified at the ADWR meetings, and I would be remiss if I did not thank our county partners. Mojave County has been amazing in this. Manager Elters and Tim Walsh and our two supervisors, Travis Lingenfelter and Jean Bishop also. And then finally, I cannot help but thank Gina Cobb for all that she's done for water for this community, her efforts. Sonny Barelli was very helpful as well and actually showed up and spoke at the INA meeting. And so a big thank you to everybody that supported this. And so great news for Kingman and something that we've been working on for a long time. And then finally, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. With that comes a couple of days where City Hall will be closed, just to let everybody know that we will be closed Monday, December 26th and Monday, January 2nd, as we observe those holidays. And thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Counselor Walker?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Savage?
Yes, we attended this last week down in Phoenix, newly-elected officer training. It was quite enjoyable. I did learn quite a bit, and I got to partake this weekend in an angel tree giveaway with a help three, over 300 local kids in the schools here in town, and want to wish you all Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Counselor Samley?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, thank you for allowing me to represent the City of Kingman at the recent WACOG meeting, the Western Arizona Council of Governments. So those are all the social service organizations. We heard from the City of Bullhead, Mojave County, Kingman Aid to Abuse People, and Accents Care. So it was very informational. Unfortunately, the theme was, in general, the needs in our county are increasing, so that's unfortunate, but we do have a lot of services to help meet the needs of our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Staley. Counselor Ward? Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Pat?
I just wanted to thank the Sleep in Heavenly Peace organization. They're an organization that builds beds for children here in town around, they do multiple events throughout the year. The President was telling me, I believe the President's former council member, Dave Wade, actually, they handed out eight beds this Christmas season, so at least there'll be eight less children sleeping on the floor, which I think is a great cause. That took place on December 10th, 2022. I just wanted to thank the donors, sponsors, and volunteers of that event. You all did a terrific job. Also Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Counselor Pat. And of course, you were there at that Sleep in Heavenly Peace, and I was able to-
You were too.
I showed up late, but was able to be there and help a little bit. And what a great organization. Actually, the Fiesta Bowl Parade down in Phoenix, they had a float, Sleep in Heavenly Peace, the local chapter down there. I was impressed that that was, that was brought to their, that was, anyway, a neat organization. Once again, I think everybody, everything's been covered, and we appreciate that, and we would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And of course, travel safely this holiday season. Watch out for each other. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counselors?
Nothing from me.
Okay. Hearing nothing. Item number nine, executive session. Item 9A, draw site litigation. The city attorney requests the council to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 to discuss and provide direction regarding the draw site litigation. Do we need to have a motion on that, Carl? You do? Can we have a motion on that, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? None? Okay, we are going into executive session. Once again, thank you for everybody being here in council chambers, and of course, you're more than welcome to stick around, but I think that'll be it for tonight. And once again, have a Merry Christmas. And once again, have a Merry Christmas.